This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Hi, everybody. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council Finance Committee. I did receive a text that Councilor Trill will not be able to attend this meeting because he's recovering from surgery. So, Councilor Denham, would you mind taking minutes for this one? Or I guess he could just look at the video. I don't know. It's easier.
It doesn't matter. I can jot something down.
Okay. So, let's see. We don't have any meeting minutes to... This is not here. So, let's... We can head to Mayor Communication. Mayor, is there anything about to communicate?
None.
Okay. I would just like to say that I did get your thing. So, we'll move that audit item in our next meeting, and we can discuss that in two weeks. Public speak. Anyone from the public would like to speak on anything?
Yes. My name's Tom Wallsbury. I'm the Chair of the East Hampton Board of Public Works. I know the Finance Committee has been continuing to aim to look at salaries and stipends for committees. And I have gotten a request from a member of my board to look at the BPW annual payment. So, I did look into it a little bit. It looks like it was set last in November of 1997 and has not been adjusted in 20 years. So, I just wanted to present it to the committee. If and when you're looking at other boards and committees, if you could also review the East Board of Public Works as part of that work. I have no input on what it should be or if it needs to be adjusted, but just would like it to go on the docket for a future meeting when you have that discussion.
Thank you.
And I'm Barbara Walverde from Lathrop, and I'm here to answer any questions that come up later about the Lathrop proposal.
Okay, great. Well, those are all the public people here. So, that's good. And we can move on to new business. And we have only one item of new business, which is the supplemental appropriation for $33,051 for invasive plant removal and control make-up community land.
Yes.
Would you like to come up to the table? And you can sort of walk us through... I was present for this presentation at CPA, but for the benefit of...
Okay.
No, I'm making a face of that. Yeah, I thought Scott was going to be here.
This is a good place for me to be.
Okay.
Perfect.
I'm sorry for being distracting.
Let me briefly summarize what this is about. Lathrop owns 103 acres of conserved land in both its campuses, North Hampton and East Hampton. And for 10 years now, we have been working, as we had the funds, on removing invasives. Why? Because invasives kill native plants and the wildlife that depend on native plants. A land dominated by invasives may lose up to 75% of its wildlife, including many pollinators, birds, beneficial insects. So, we're trying to make Lathrop a haven of protected land where native plants and native wildlife can survive. Our 103 acres of conserved land on both campuses are connected to each other on the East Campus and also to other protected land on both campuses. In the East Hampton, our CR acres connect to North Hampton CR, which Lathrop owns, but its CR is held by the city of North Hampton. And that in turn connects to the Park Hill area, which, as you know, is a high priority for land conservation in the city. So, we now, with a lot of help from professional consultants, have devised a three-year plan to move ourselves, what we call the Great Leap Forward, on invasives. What the consultants did, and this was Land Stewardship Inc., which you probably know has been in the area for a long time, done a lot of work on invasive removal, and native habitat restoration. So, they came in the last two years, one campus each year, and they did an extensive inventory of the invasives that were there, where they were, what invasives, whole list, how dense they were, and then what they thought would be the first to attack and the second, and so on, so priorities. It was a wonderful recommendation, and it is attached to our proposal, multi-pages. So, building on that recommendation, a strong local committee of residents working with management at Lathrop have devised this three-year plan. And the three-year plan has been looked at by everybody you can imagine, because we're a Quaker community and we operate by consensus. So, the Land Committee, which has almost 30 resident members, the Land Stewardship Committee, and so on, and so on. So, this is really a community project, this grant proposal. So, we came to the city of North Hampton and to the city of East Hampton, Community Preservation Funds in both cases, and to Kestrel Land Trust, because it holds the CR on our East Hampton land, 78 acres. So, we came to them, and we are now collaborating with them. So, the city of North Hampton, so it was a three-year project, and the city of North Hampton has funded all three years of their share, and it's all done through the city council and everything. We're about to start work this fall. The East Hampton Community Preservation Committee looked at the whole three-year proposal, responded very favorably to it, but in the end, after quite a bit of discussion, decided to formally fund only the first year. That's where the $33,000 comes from. So, what we're here to do is to say we would like approval from the city council for the $33,000 and something of the first year of funding for this proposal. The proposal, the project, will be matched by contributions from Kestrel, but also by contributions from Lathrop. The Resident Land Committee raises money by resident donations, and we have committed $25,000. So, that's a lot of money for us, for residents of our committee money to this project. Each of the two residents councils has committed $1,000. And in addition, Lathrop will be offering in-kind services and services that Lathrop pays a contractor for. And residents, we have a lot of residents who volunteer to work on this project and have been doing so for the last years. So, that's the project in a nutshell. There will also be a public education part. So, once a year, we will hold a program in which the whole general public is invited, and we advertise it and everything. We've done this before, and it's been very successful. So, we have a speaker. We've got one lined up for October. The Kestrel Land Trust has given us one of their really good people to do a walk and talk. So, the person talks a little bit about our land and the invasive work that we've been doing, and then leads a walk through part of our land to explain and talk about it and answer questions. In addition to that, there's a little bit of money to erect informational signs on the land, and there is some money for a final evaluation. We have this initial evaluation that Land Stewardship Inc. did, and now, at the end of the three years, we will have experts conduct another evaluation to say, did we improve it? Which we absolutely will. Any questions?
Councilor Denham?
Go ahead. Any questions?
I do, but...
No, go ahead.
Well, just the one thing I wanted... So, I attended the first meeting about this, and then I was unable to attend the second one. And I think I saw enough, but just... What I'd like to get a better sense of is these, the land that we're talking about. Is the public able to access this land?
Yes.
And if I recall correctly from the appropriation, there's going to... Part of that signage is going to say that this project was funded, and that people are allowed to hike on it.
The signs that we propose in the grant proposal are informational signs about the land and about the work on the land. So, they will say, you know, this is the work that we've done on this section of the woods, and these are the invasives that we moved, and it was funded in part by the CPCs of blah, blah, blah. Those kinds of signs are what we proposed.
Right. Let me just check one thing real quick. I just want to... Just want to see, there's some specific language that was in the actual appropriation order I should have had prepared, but I... Well, yeah, I just... So, is there going to be, in terms of this... There's not going to be any new additional signage that might let somebody who doesn't know that these lands are available know that they're available?
The question is where, as you remember.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I'm just curious, since I wasn't at that second meeting.
Right, okay. So, the question was, would there be a sign on Florence Road saying, "Trailhead this way"? And Lathrop has argued strongly against that, as did a number of members of the CPC Committee, because our trails are maintained by residents. They are not structured or maintained to have general public, like this is where you take your kids on a Sunday afternoon. Rather, what we are intending to do is to feature our land for what is special about our land, which is the work that we have done on invasive removal and native habitat. So, we have these programs. Everybody is invited to come. In addition to that, we invite anyone to contact us for a guided tour of the land, an individual, a group, again, about our invasives, so that we can focus on the people who will really benefit from what is special about our land. However, that said, at our trailhead, there's a sign that says, "Visitors welcomed, dawn to dusk."
It's not something you're promoting or saying, but it's something that if I was to go there, have it upon it...
Absolutely.
Walk on that.
Absolutely. And some local people do. But the trails are not maintained... They're maintained by residents for the most part, and so they're not maintained for general heavy public use. And we sometimes close them because of the use, because of issues of wetness and...
Councilor, do you have any?
I just, for the public, a clarifying question. So, CR, when you say that Kestrel owns the CR, so that's the conservation restriction?
Yes.
Is that what you mean? Okay. And can you just describe what that means?
Yes, thank you. Lathrop owns the land and continues to own the land, as do all landowners that have CRs on their land. But the Kestrel holds the conservation restriction, which means that there are regulations about how we can and cannot use the land. We can't put a golf course on it. We can't build any buildings on it, but we are allowed to do certain things on it. But its primary purpose is to conserve the land for wildlife and for nature enjoyment. And so, what the holder of the CR, of the conservation restriction, does basically is to come there once a year and walk around and see that we haven't put a golf course on there.
Okay, great. That's very helpful. And then, really, just a comment. I think this is very exciting, right? And I can see the pride that you're taking in this project and coming here and talking about it. And I would imagine if the group of residents who are in here talking about that, I think that they would feel the same way. And so, I think that that's really positive, and I'm glad that that's something that the residents of Lathrop have taken on and have done, because I think in the end, not only is it a benefit to the land that Lathrop is on, but it's a benefit to the rest of the community, right? Because you're taking in invasives, you're revitalizing pollinators, providing that habitat for local animals, insects, et cetera, et cetera, right? So, I think that's something that's incredibly positive, and I also appreciate the fact that you're working with not just yourself, but you're working with a variety of different... Or a few different organizations to be able to kind of manifest this, right? So, I want to commend you on that. I think that's something that's really very important, and please pass that, those...
Certainly will.
... onto members of the board of council, because I do think that this is important. And it isn't something that you're necessarily coming to the city to say, "We need you to fix this." You've said, "We need to fix this," and you're doing that, right? So, I think that that's really important. And I'll send one last question, just for the community. So, the $33,000 plus, that really is taking care of the land that's East Hampton and not necessarily pooling that into something that's for North Hampton and East Hampton.
No, we will have those... We will have the East Hampton and the North Hampton funds set up on separate budgetary lines. Our CFO, our Chief Financial Officer, has been deeply involved in constructing this proposal. She signed off on it, and so on. So, we'll do it right. We've had, by the way, several grants from the city of North Hampton for invasive removal on their land in past years, and we've handled those... We've handled those very well. And we've kept all the funds separate and so on. So, we'll be able to track this city, that city, the matching funds, the matching funds, and so on. Yeah.
Great. And then, just one last comment, if there's anything I could do to support the project. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. There's not anything else? There's only two of us, so I could just make a motion. I would move to recommend the appropriation of $33,051 for invasive plant removal and control on Lathrop community land to the full council.
Second.
Motion second.
Aye. Thank you.
Sounds good. Will be, it's next week. Next week? Yeah.
I have on my calendar.
Okay, great.
And I'll be...
See you then.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that's all of our new business, continuing business. Do we have any new fiscal reports, you know?
Not yet. Normally, it takes me three months to close the books.
Okay.
Once I close the books, I would have, as of June 30th.
Okay, great. Sounds good. And then, I know we don't have our full committee here, but... Councilor Denham, I was just curious, do you have any thoughts on... Have you just had any thoughts on sort of how we might want to approach the matter of the review of salaries for elected officials and planning committees?
I mean, I have thoughts. I think that you were thinking about presenting some sort of, what you described, I think was a pay plan type thing, but I'm not sure where that is in that process, et cetera.
Yeah. I don't think that... I haven't made much process on it since I was out of the country for the most of the time since we last talked about it. But I was just... I think that's an idea that I wanted to just sort of pitch, specifically because of the sort of challenges that Tom was mentioning earlier, where there's things that go unadjusted, and then 15 years pass. So, that's something that I had just sort of thought might be something we want to consider as an option.
Sure. And my understanding also was that we had reached out to the city clerk, or the... Not the city clerk, sorry. The... But also the council clerk?
Yes.
Do you gather some data on what other cities are doing? Has that been... Has that occurred? Do we have that information?
I don't think we have any new information from the last time we spoke. I can ask... I will ask Barb to... I'll check in with Barb about that, but...
I think that information, for me, would be really helpful. I'm certainly open to entertaining the idea of exploring committees and that. I'm more concerned about council officials raising that, because we just raised that last year by $2,000. And so, to now tack on what someone proposed of $1,500 in addition, I just feel that feels kind of... When we're in a deficit of $1.8 million, I'm concerned about that. However, you know, the Planning Board hasn't been in... Or Public Works, or the Board of Public Works, hasn't received anything since 1997, right? And like, that's a concern. That's an equity question for me that I think needs to be addressed. But in terms of some of the other kind of pieces, I'm not... I'm not feeling that concern for that. So, but committees and things like that that have been with this situation for 30 years, I'm more open to entertaining that discussion.
Yeah. I will... I'll write Barb tonight, and I'll specifically ask her to ask her out a little bit about the site and some various appointed officials.
I am pretty sure that MMA has salary studies for councilors, mayors, town administrators, and whatnot. They have an overall, and I'm certainly happy to inquire and copy the chair to see what they have.
Sure, that'd be great. I mean, I can check their website as well. But yeah, that'd be, that'd be great. You know, I found that when we start to do those things, like, you know, I've been around the block on this a couple of times, and I find that we find ourselves often in this weird situation when we start talking about the salaries of other cities, where I don't know that we've ever come up with a great rubric for how we should think about this. So, for instance, there will be a city, let's just say, Chickopee. Chickopee has 60,000 people. We have 60,000. They're about four times as big. And so, it's unsurprised that their councilors are paid quite a bit more, because they have a larger tax base at the same time. Or then, and their mayor makes quite a bit more than our mayor. They have a larger tax base. But then, the question is, to some extent, well, does that... Do they do more work? You know, that, I think, is where sort of there's... We have the same disagreement every like two years, and I've never really seen like a good... Sort of, I've never really seen us come to an agreement about how to think about that, about sort of, you know, what is fair there? Because like, you know, if we're... Is it fair for people to be doing, you know, performing essentially the same functions for a smaller tax base? Should they, as a result, just accept a proportional compensation? Or do we need to account for the fact that the labor is actually quite similar, even, you know? Or maybe it's not quite similar. I've never been in Chickopee since.
I mean, the...
You want to be in Chickopee City Council.
Yeah, right. You could be fast for Chickopee. So, I actually have been kind of thinking about this, not even directly to East Hampton as much as... I can't remember the city. It starts with an M. Melrose, Malden, where the mayor there's salary was raised to more money than, I think, the mayor of Boston, and it passed. And they had a consultant who had actually looked at these salaries and recommended even more for the mayor. So, I, like, in thinking that, I just kind of followed it, because I wanted to see what council and public outcry and how that went. And there wasn't a lot, which I'm not suggesting that a mayor should make his personal... In East Hampton, they shouldn't make $240,000. But what it did kind of trigger for me is the idea of what the job is and then what the community will be okay with, and how to balance that. Because, you know, you could take just by sheer numbers and say, "This guy is overpaid for the job," because look at Mayor Wu in Boston and the sizes. And I do remember some conversation about that for mayors and city councilors, and based on to the structure, like, is it strong mayor? Is it, you know, and how that, you know, factors in? So, it, yeah, I just, I don't think I have an answer or direction other than, there just seems to be a part of the decision, like, if the part of the decision of salary to be, these are the skill sets and the tasks, which are, you know, it's hard, because anybody can be elected. But the other is, what does the community want to see? And I'm not sure, like, I'm not part of my job to figure that out. But it was, I did, you know, thinking about, and how to balance those salaries with kind of the pattern of spending we do in the city? You know, and you and I have had conversations about what we save and what goes into operating, and how does that translate to salaries for elected officials? So, it's more of a philosophical conversation in my head, but I do think, one, how do we spend normally across, like, looking at our... Looking at salary, but also how much, what we save and whatnot, and also what the community expectation is. And from my perspective, or my perspective is, I don't see, if it was my vote or whatnot, I don't see a need to raise any of the sal... Absence of boards, you know, I don't want to mess, I don't want to upset DPW or the board. Maybe something like we did last time, when Councilor Kozinski suggested like an increase over, you know, the next term of four years, and reconsidered or whatnot, of 3% or something like that. I could understand that, but I... In proportion to the rest of the budget and how we spend, not the amount of work, I would be concerned if there was a big hike above maybe like a cost of living or an acknowledgement of inflation. And I know you guys have talked about that, too. And I've not seen a city that actually, like, in their pay plan or in their charter or in their rules, have said, "This is the salary of a mayor, and it shall be attached, you know, attached to some economic indicator."
I haven't either.
Yeah.
But I thought that what Councilor Kozinski did back then made a certain amount of sense in just... I feel like so many of the conversations that we have around these things come down to basically saying, "Well, we..." You know, this, I mean, even what we were talking about with the parking tickets a few years back, where we're talking about, and it's like, "Oh, actually, those parking tickets were set in the 70s, and in today's dollars, they would have been $250." You know, it's like, well, okay, these things, like, if we don't have some mechanism for thinking about them, then just the way that...
Yeah.
The money and the world works, they sort of fall to the side. So, I thought that that might be just a thing worth talking about, about saying, "Do we want to build something like that in at the minimum?" And then, you know, if we were actually talking about changing, like, in a more structural way, saying, "Oh, we should increase the mayor's salary, the city council's salary," I think that, like, I think I tend to agree with Councilor Denham, that just when we dealt with a deficit, you know, this probably isn't the right time to do that. And I also think that those conversations to me often get frustrating, because I'm trying to figure out sort of like, what are we attempting to... What's the outcome we're seeking? You know, we raised our... We raised not... I mean, I guess we did raise our salary. We didn't know it would be S at the time. But, you know, we raised the salaries of the future council. And a big reason that we said we were doing that was to make it so that the... We were hoping that an increase in salary would make it so that a more diverse group of people would run, and then that just absolutely didn't happen at all. We had one of the least... I think there was one precinct race that was competitive, and that's it. So, you know, that was, I... And it's just like, I mean, maybe it was a fluke or something about that year or whatever, but it's like, you know, that was... it's like, you know, that was, that was something that we were hoping to see and we didn't see that. So does that mean that that isn't the thing that is the barrier there? Or, I mean, we obviously know there are other barriers.
I mean, I think that, I do request some consideration. On the other side of that is, you know, when I took office, it was seventy-five thousand dollars. And then Counselor Kozinski, you know, you guys agreed like it would step up. And with consideration, and even with city council, as somebody who builds the budget, a mayor, I'd rather see like a little like two percent, two percent, two percent, so I can plan for it rather than ten percent in six years or because we haven't done anything. That, that's, I mean, the other is, you know, I think that that's, even though there's a deficit, we don't want to create the next or start the next deficit by looking in twenty thirty and going, oh, wow, we're off twenty-five thousand dollars for mayor and we're off a thousand dollars for city, or whatever the amount is. But something gradual that's somewhat acknowledging inflation or just the price of eggs and milk. You know, that would be great if it was considered, because it just takes a little pressure off of the city of making this massive deserved job. But, you know, it's a hunk of money to fill into a budget.
Okay. All that in mind?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I think, and I'm glad you brought that up, I was gonna mention that in aside. I think that I made a very conscious effort and decision last time of like, I would like to see a more diverse council, right? And that was a very intentional vote to see, is that what this is, right? And I think some of the arguments that I've heard for it this time is, well, I don't take these jobs because I don't have time because I'm doing this, right? And so I could pay more money that. And so I think the piece that I'm struggling with is that this was a choice for me, right? I could choose to do those other things, but I'm choosing to do this. And taxpayers, residents, they're not responsible for the choices that I make, right? That's, this is my commitment to my community, right? And that's not something that I personally feel like I need to be compensated for every two years or added to or thinking about cost of living adjustments and things like that. That's not within the scope of what this is and residents aren't responsible for the choices that I make. Or it's, obviously that's a bit different, right? They haven't been, that's something that I think hasn't been addressed in many, many years, right? Equal, equally they give that participation. But for me, right? It's about the choices that I make and not necessarily what I feel that I'm entitled to or expected to be compensated for.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only thing I would say is that like, you know, when I started on the city council, I was making like forty-seven thousand dollars a year at EMS, like it was a fairly entry level position. You know, it was like definitely having that extra city council money definitely helped. And, you know, but taking this job as city council, it is my choice. And but one of the consequences of that choice is that I cannot pick up a bartending shift. You know, on certain, you know, there's certain, there's certain things that I cannot do because I do this. And in fact, there's certain things that I, there's, you know, there's other, but there's certain choices that I cannot do because of this. And so I do think that when you're talking about people who are in a situation where maybe they are struggling to make ends meet, maybe that additional money is, you know, is potentially there, but then there's clearly other barriers because we raised it by fifty percent. It didn't change anything. So, I mean, there's one data point, I mean, I'm not
I mean, I can, I hear that, I mean, I do, I mean, and not to be sarcastic, literally. When I made the choice to be mayor, I gave up a lot of things, one of them is sleep. You know, but the claw, and it's tough. I mean, I think that the last raise in city council salaries was important and I think it demonstrated our commitment, your commitment to like, look, if your data point that tips it is this additional money, then we just want you to know, like as a city, that we're just trying to do as much as we possibly can. And, yeah, I mean, I I'm tired, but it makes me sad that I can't change the, you know, that we can't figure out, you know, labor across the board to allow this public service bonus by the government. Maybe that's socialism. Yeah, so I do, I mean, I, at first, with the last increase, I was like, oh, my gosh. Yeah, you had a lot of like, what are we gonna do? But it was important and Counselor Denham and others made a very, you know, I think, important argument that if this is one thing, then, okay, let's increase it this much and see. And maybe it'll, you know, maybe it'll entice somebody next election cycle.
Maybe it will.
Yeah, I guess, I know you and I are just going round and round, but I would love consideration of like a smaller increase just to nod of the head to just inflation and everything, you know? What that is, I don't know, but
All right, well, if it's okay, I can write something to that effect for our next meeting for us to discuss and just sort of structuring it roughly after, you know, what the pay plan, you know, because that's just a good number, I think, that we can benchmark it to, to just say, you know, over these years. And then maybe that'll help us to prevent from getting into another situation where suddenly we're talking about, oh, it's been fifteen years and now we need to double it.
I mean, anything to avoid that would be very appreciated on the executive and budgetary level.
Anything else on this? Okay. All right, I would move that we adjourn. Motion second, all in favor? Thanks, everyone.